I would like to extend a welcome to everyone, mayor-elect, our council members, our distinguished guests, Judge Wenzel, members of the families of the newly elected officials, and of course, our viewing audience at home. Right now, I'd like to invite the newly elected council members to join me out front. City of Wilmer conducted a general election on November 8, 2022, which resulted in citizens re-electing council members to their respective wards and electing one new council member to Ward 1. As city clerk and chief official in charge of voting, I would like to take this opportunity to present to you a certificate of election. The certificate reads, "I, Judy Thompson, City Clerk of the City of Wilmer in the State of Minnesota, do hereby certify that at a general election held in said city and state on Tuesday, being the 8th day of November, 2022, Carl Schulz received the highest number of votes cast for the office of Councilmember 1st Ward, Vicki Davis received the highest number of votes cast for the office of Councilmember 2nd Ward, Rick Fagerly received the highest number of votes cast for the office of Councilmember 3rd Ward, and Audrey Nelson received the highest number of votes cast for the office of Councilmember 4th Ward in the City of Wilmer, State of Minnesota. I was therefore duly elected to said office as appears from the official election returns and canvas on file in my office. Congratulations to each one of you." You can return to your seats at this time. Mayor-elect, if you could join me out front. Also, on that same day, November 8, 2022, the citizens of the City of Wilmer, all wards, elected Mr. Doug Reese as mayor of the City of Wilmer, and as such, Mr. Reese, I would like to present you with the certificate of election that simply says, "I, Judy Thompson, City Clerk of the City of Wilmer in the State of Minnesota, do hereby certify that at a general election held in said city and state on Tuesday, being the 8th day of November, 2022, Doug Reese received the highest number of votes cast for the office of mayor in the City of Wilmer, State of Minnesota, and was therefore duly elected to said office as appears from the official election returns and canvas on file in my office. Doug Reese, congratulations." And now, I'd like to introduce the Honorable Judge Stephen J. Wenzel.
Good evening to you. Congratulations as well. I can start with Mayor-elect Reese. Could you please raise your right hand? I Douglas Reese.
I Douglas Reese.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
In the State of Minnesota.
In the State of Minnesota.
In the Wilmer City Charter.
In the Wilmer City Charter.
And that I will discharge faithfully.
And that I will discharge faithfully.
The duties of the office.
The duties of office.
Of mayor.
Of mayor.
Of the City of Wilmer.
Of the City of Wilmer.
The best of my judgment and ability.
The best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations. If I could have the council members stand and take their oath at this time as well? Please raise your right hands. I state your name.
I, Carl Schulz.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the State of Minnesota.
And the State of Minnesota.
And the Wilmer City Charter.
And the Wilmer City Charter.
And that I will discharge faithfully.
And that I will discharge faithfully.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of city council member.
Of city council member.
Of the City of Wilmer.
Of the City of Wilmer.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
This time, I would need all of the new council members and the mayor to come over here to sign your oath of office, and we can get it notarized for you.
This is Audrey.
Oh, they got their names on them.
Okay, sorry. Audrey. You can pass the pen to her, please.
Congratulations. Take the paper. I have one.
Thank you.
In the rest.
Is it my turn?
Yeah.
We'll call the meeting adjourned. Roll call.
Mayor Reese.
I, here.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Here.
Osmas.
Here.
Butterfield.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Schulz.
Here.
Ask.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under common ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would call on Pastor Keith Kerstetter from the A.G. Church for the invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. It's really an honor to stand with you and pray for the welfare of our city, so let's do so now. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Guide us to be the leaders we were created to be and not the leaders we're tempted to be. Help us to seek to understand before we seek to be right by listening with compassion and goodwill, speaking with wisdom and charity, and acting with care. Give us a spirit of unity, for we are better together. Open the eyes of our hearts to the humanity and dignity to those who disagree with us and to treat all persons with the reverence your creation deserves. And renew us with the joy and strength of your presence as we build a community capable of savoring the human experience. Without you, we cannot. This we ask, each in our own way, and I in the name of Christ my Savior. Amen. Lord bless you and keep you.
Thank you, Pastor Keith. I sit here as your mayor, humble and hopeful, honored to be the mayor of the City of Wilmer, the city that has become home for my wife Marion and I for the last 50 years. I thank Mayor Calvin for his dedication and service to our city, which was exemplified by the attention and time that he took to make this transition smooth. Thank you. Thank you to my wife Marion and our family for their support. I also thank my election committee, some of who are here with us tonight. Dennis Anderson, Ryan Zimmer, Cecil Meyer, Yvonne Fields-I'm, Wayne Nelson, Linda Mathiason, James Miller, and Melissa Sorensen. Without their help, the task of the campaign would have been overwhelming. I grew up in a small town where my parents were business people and served their community in many ways. As parents, they led by example. They instilled in me a clear set of values: faith, loyalty to family, friends, and community, and the importance of hard work, education, and integrity. Even though my parents passed away some time ago, I continue to work hard to honor them, to live by the values that they instilled in me. To the city council, city administrator, department heads, and all city employees, I look forward to working together with each and every one of you to continue to make the City of Wilmer the best city that it can possibly be. To the young men and women of our city, you have the most at stake in the city's future, just as the city's future depends on you. Get involved and work with us. By doing so, you will gain an understanding of how local government works, and maybe someday you will sit at this table as a city council member or mayor. To all citizens of Wilmer, take pride in what we have, what we have accomplished, and what we have achieved. What has been amazing and humbling of the experience over these last few months after the election is the tremendous hope and optimism that I have been feeling from the citizens of Wilmer. It is that message of possibility that should get all of us up in the morning. Matthew 22:37-39, "Love the Lord your God with all your heart, with all your soul, with all your mind." This is the first and greatest commandment, and the second is like it: love your neighbor as yourself. And if we follow the great commandment, together as neighbors, that will make our city great. From there, we go to proposed additions or deletions to the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion. We have a second. Second. We got a motion and a second. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries.
Yeah, Mayor. I would like to remove 10-F from the consent agenda. It's the new appointments.
Okay.
That would be later, after we get to the consent agenda. We're not there yet.
Okay. Leslie, you're gonna...
So at this time, we're gonna go with the consideration of the council reorganization resolutions, and so we're gonna start with the elect mayor pro tem. And it is at this time that the council has always, during this biannual meeting after the elections, redo their reorganization, and it is part of the mayor pro tem to step in in the absence of the mayor or unable to act as such mayor. And the charter provides that in the absence or disability of the mayor, an acting mayor, the AK, mayor pro tem, shall be appointed by action of the city council. Is there... At this time, we would accept nominations for the mayor pro tem and then go move on to the motion after that.
Councilmember Butterfield.
I'll put in Rick Fagerly's name for mayor pro tem.
Okay.
Any other nominations for the mayor pro tem?
Councilmember Davis.
I would like to nominate Justin Ask.
Any further nominations? Any further nominations? Any further nominations? At this time, since there's two nominations for the mayor pro tem, in the past, it has been the council's preference to do this by ballot voting. And you each have your ballot. You can write your initials on the corner of the ballot, please, and then who you would like vote for, who you would like to have as mayor pro tem. And then Judy will collect those. You read them. Did you read them? Did you read them as you opened them?
You should just read them.
Tell he comes to three for councilmember Fagerly and five for councilmember Ask.
So at this time, the motion, we need a motion and a second to adopt a councilman...
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Rick.
Second. Second.
Julie, thank you. So the motion is then by Rick Fagerly and seconded by Julie Osmas to adopt the resolution appointing Justin Ask as the mayor pro tem for the two years of 2023 to 2024. All in favor?
Roll call.
A roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Schulz.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight present, eight ayes, zero nays.
Resolution to adopt a rules of order.
At this time, the rules of order also come into the biennial, the biennium adoption, and we have to authorize the parliamentary rules of order, could be Roberts Rules of Order, Mason's Manual, Thomas Jefferson's A Manual of Parliamentary Practice, Alastair Gis' Standard Code of Parliamentary Procedure, or the Minnesota Mayors Association Rules of Order for the city council, and shall be provided as a journal of its proceedings, which the journal shall be a public record, to give in the past, it has been the Alastair Gis' Standard Code of Parliamentary Procedure that has been accepted by the council.
Do we have a motion?
I can make a motion to stay with the same parliamentary procedures.
I got a motion and a second. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmas.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Schulz.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Resolution to establish council meeting dates and times.
That one's not a mic.
Sorry, the resolution passed.
It was the committee member liaison on assignments, is 9C on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Yep. So this is to adopt the resolution that assigns the various member and liaison appointments to the board and commissions for the city. The council biennial selects who acts as liaisons or members for various boards and commissions at the organizational meeting in January. Council members shall discuss and select the various individuals to fill each of these positions as indicated in the attached resolution. Earlier this afternoon, you received an attached, updated form of this resolution with the various appointments. The one we do need discussion on is there's still an appointment for the library system and an alternate for the Rice Hospital Board, if everybody agrees with the way the appointments are as they are here presented.
We're looking for a motion.
Well, discussion, yeah, motion and then discussion, yes.
Audrey.
I was just going to comment that the Rice Hospital billboard meets quarterly.
Thank you.
So that's just the timeframe, and it's usually on a Wednesday at noon. And so far, for the last while, it's been remote also.
So a motion then?
Yeah.
We need a motion. To discuss?
I don't think we had a motion or...
No, we don't have a motion. Thank you.
Okay, we got a motion.
Second.
We got a second discussion. Julie.
I would also like to say that the library committee meets in the evening, so somebody who couldn't attend daytime meetings, that would be a good selection.
We don't have anybody on...
No, we don't.
That we've identified for the library. Anybody willing to volunteer for that?
What time is that one at usually?
Um, 6:00.
At night?
Yep, 6:00 PM.
I will.
Okay. So we'll add councilmember Butterfield's name to that. All right.
Alternate then for the Rice Hospital Board.
Justin.
I'd be willing to do it if it's quarterly.
Okay. So that, we don't have to have another second?
No.
Or motion?
Not unless there's further discussion. We can move into roll call vote.
Okay. So we just change it and then...
Yeah, we will update the resolution.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Schulz.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Was the city attorney going to say something that I skipped?
No, Mayor, it was just, it looked like councilmember Butterfield had a comment, but I think he's, well, I'll let him speak.
I still can use it. Can we read, can we read this for the public so the public will know who's on what board?
We certainly can. It is also posted on our website, but I can. The EDC Joint Powers Board will be Julie Osmas and Vicki Davis and Mayor Reese. Human Rights Commission is Vicki Davis and Justin Ask. Fire Court Code Appeals Board, Rick Fagerly and Thomas Butterfield. Mid-Minnesota Development Commission, Carl Schulz. Vision 2040 Steering Committee, Julie Osmas. Central Community Transit Board, Rick Fagerly and Justin Ask. Pioneer Land Systems Library System, Tom Butterfield. Wilmer Cable Advisory Board, Thomas Butterfield, Michael O'Brien. Wilmer Convention Bureau and Visitors Bureau is Audrey Nelson. Airport Commission is Carl Schulz with an alternate, Justin Ask. Park and Recreation Board, Julie Osmas and Carl Schulz. Municipal Utilities Commission, Michael O'Brien, alternate, Thomas Butterfield. Candy Y County HRA, Audrey Nelson with an alternate of Vicki Davis. Rice Hospital Board, Audrey Nelson with alternate, Justin Ask. Internal Government Planning and Communication Committee, Mayor Reese. City Administrator, Michael O'Brien, and an alternate, Audrey Nelson. Main Street Committee is Vicki Davis with an alternate, Rick Fagerly.
Okay. Next is a resolution to establish the council meeting dates and times.
The semi-monthly meetings of the city council in the past have been held on the first and third Mondays of each month, with the exception of the first or third Monday, which is a legally recognized holiday. The council meetings shall be rescheduled to Tuesday, and the regular place of said meetings shall be in the boardroom at the Health and Human Services Building, 2200 23rd Street Northeast, Wilmer, Minnesota. During peacetime emergencies, the city council meetings may be held at alternate locations or in a virtual format or by any other means by law. The council biennial adopts that the following schedule and the time of the adjournment of said council meetings shall be no later than 11:00 PM. An item of business under consideration at 11:00 PM may be disposed of, and the business from the first meeting of the month will be carried over to the second meeting if necessary. Any business not completed at the second meeting of the month, which is urgent and must take action, will be adjourned to a special meeting. And attached is the resolution to set our meetings for the Monday, first and third Mondays of the month at 6:30 at the Health and Human Services Building.
I'll make that motion.
I can second.
We got a motion and a second discussion. Roll call. Oh, I'm sorry. Audrey.
I think we had talked about asking or request to have that actual calendar sent to us.
I thought it was in here, but I don't see it.
No, I didn't, I didn't see it either, and I think that was something that would be helpful that we had talked about.
Yes, we certainly will send it out because it was...
Okay, thank you.
Do we do the roll call?
Please do.
Councilmember O'Brien.
Aye.
Schulz.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Next is a resolution to designate the official newspaper.
The city is required to designate a legal newspaper. The Minnesota State Statute 31A.04 subdivision 2 requires that when there are one or more qualified newspapers, the known office of issue of which are located in the political subdivision, one of them shall be designated. Because the West Central Tribune's office of issue is in the City of Wilmer, the city must designate a newspaper located in the city as its legal newspaper.
I'll introduce that.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. All those, no, roll call, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Schulz.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And the resolution to designate responsible authorities... And the resolution to designate responsible authority data practices?
Yes, the Minnesota Government Data Practices Act regulates data collected, created, received, or maintained, disseminated, or stored by a state agency, political subdivision, or statewide system regardless of its physical form, storage media, or conditions of use. Minnesota State Statute, Section 13.02 subdivision six, requires the city to appoint one person as the responsible authority to administer the requirements of the collection, storage, use, and dissemination of data on individuals within the city. The resolution to appoint city clerk Judy Thompson is before you as the responsible authority of administrator of requirements for collection, storage, use, and dissemination of data on individuals within the city for the two years of 2023 to 2024.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Can we get a motion and a second discussion? No discussion, roll call.
Councilmember Osk?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmas?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Sholdas?
Aye.
Eight eyes zero knees.
Then we have the resolutions appointing official depositories and authorizing electronic fund transfers. There's three resolutions, right?
Two. Two resolutions.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, included in your packet are two resolutions. The first resolution is to authorize electronic fund transfers for Minnesota Statute, Section 47138, allowing the use of electronic funds for the following payments: For payment from an impressed payroll bank account or investment of excess money; for payment of tax and aid anticipation certificates; for vendor payments; for payment of bond principal, bond interest, and fiscal agent service charges from debt redemption funds. Whereas the statute requires the government body to annually delegate the authority to make the electronic fund transfers to designated officers, it's recommended that the council delegate the authority to the city finance director. That's your first resolution.
Okay.
I can enter that resolution.
We have a motion?
Second.
And we got a second discussion? And that is a roll call, right?
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmas?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Sholdas?
Aye.
Osk?
Aye.
Eight eyes zero knees.
Mr. Mayor, the second resolution in your packet is per state statutes requires that the city designate general depositories for city monies. Following institutions are presently used and recommended to be designated as official depositories for the city of Wilmer. Bremmer Bank NA, Bremmer Wealth, US Bancor United, Wells Fargo Advisors, Multiple Bank Securities, the 4M Fund, and UBS.
Also Heritage Bank. Heritage Bank also. It's in the first sign.
Yes, Heritage Bank.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
You got a motion?
Second.
Second discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmas?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Sholdas?
Aye.
Osk?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Eight eyes zero knees.
Resolution passes. All right. Uh, consent items, Judy?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on tonight's consent agenda, we have for council's approval, the city council minutes of December 19th, city work session minutes of November 29th, the CVB board minutes of November 15th, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Commission minutes of December 21st, the accounts payable report, the new appointments to boards and commissions, a resolution approving the Public Works Cabotum Ours purchase, and for council's information, the building report for December of 2022.
Mayor? I would like to remove 10F or request to pull 10F from the consent agenda.
10F? Okay.
I'd like a motion to approve the other consent items then.
Okay, we got a motion?
Second.
We got a second discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Oh, I see, one's a resolution.
Yes. So we would need a roll call.
Roll call.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmas?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Sholdas?
Aye.
Osk?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eight eyes zero knees.
All right, then our building report, December 2022?
You don't need to do, that's information.
Okay. So we need a motion to approve the consent agenda? We did that, right?
We did that.
We just need to discuss the item that was pulled?
All right, items removed from the agenda? Would you want to talk about that?
Yes, we have three applicants, and there's actually two positions. The Municipal Utilities wants to send it back to the commission, their commission, and have another poll.
This is the appointments from the commission?
These are the appointments, yes, yes. And they have, on here, they have three applicants, and there's only two positions available.
Oh, okay.
Yep, so council needs to appoint two of the, two of these for the municipal utilities.
But do we need the recommendation from the MUC?
We don't know. The recommendation comes from, or the council is the one that approves it, so.
Okay.
These are all...
Councilmember Nelson?
So I'm confused also. We used to just receive them for information. The first time they were presented, and then vote on them the next time. Are we not going to do that?
There was a change to that earlier in December, but if you want to continue that practice, that's what we can do.
I think that gives the council an opportunity to review that also. And I, I wouldn't know how to pick two out of the three that were there. I would think that, that since there are other people who need renewals at the utilities also, that referring it back to them and...
You've, the utilities was all, you, in December, you already renewed the boards, the utility board in December.
So there was...
That was already done. In December, council approved the renewals for the board. These are just for the two open seats.
So do you want a motion to return it to the utilities at the...
Well, they were all picked by the utilities. They were all referred to from us by the utilities, all three of them.
So they want us to, Julie?
Well, obviously, we have three, and we only have two positions.
Right.
To me, if somebody stepped forward, they're willing to serve. Do we still have openings on the planning commission?
Oh, yeah. Yes, we do.
Do we, um, ask if...
We certainly can.
Any one of those three would be willing to?
Mm-hmm.
Serve on a different commission or committee?
We sure can. That's the point. So we will bring this back then on the 23rd.
Do you need a motion to do that, or just anything?
No, it would just be tabled.
Need a motion to table?
I suppose. Wouldn't you?
Yep.
Yeah, I would recommend a motion to table item F from the consent agenda.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay. We've, okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I didn't ask for opposed. Okay. Sorry, I'm learning. All right, we have next the open forum, and individuals are limited to three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, there's no one that's signed up for the open forum this evening.
All right, so we'll move on to number 13, the public hearing. Jill, there you, there she is.
Boy, you don't have a computer. Screen's not working. Can you put it up? Thank you. Jill, do you need the PowerPoint itself in order to do this?
Do I have to open the public hearing?
Yep.
Yes, Mayor, I would recommend opening the public hearing.
And I just do it by declaring it to open.
You just declare it open.
All right, I'll open the public hearing then for the 2019 Small Cities Development Program. Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development, DEED, awarded, uh, Wilmer a 2019 Small Cities Development Program funding in the amount of $1 million to implement a streetscape project and a multifamily rehab project. So as a requirement for the funding, the city is required to conduct a public hearing during program, during project implementation and receive an update on the status of activities and allow for public comments.
Thank you.
If you want to jump over to the third page. Okay, so project financing, uh, this is from the grant application. $400,000 was awarded to the city from DEED for the streetscape in the downtown area. Leverage sources included $30,000 from Minnesota Main Street, $161,600 from the city of Wilmer, $300,000 from MUC, for a total project cost of $891,600. For the multifamily rehab side, Lakeview was to receive $600,000 from Small Cities. Uh, the HRA will also be receiving $747,000 from Minnesota Housing, $927,745 in HRA capital funds, and $1.445 million from HRA reserves. Total project cost for the Lakeview rehab is $3,719,745. So altogether, total project, streetscape and lakeview, 4.6. Justice is kind of heading off the coast. Can you see project activity here's on the 11th?
Yeah, so just as a general update, this is one of the first things that I took on when I became the planning director, was that there was a little bit of a hiccup just kind of with the funding, what was going to be approved with the initial project, and then we pivoted to this project that was more of a mobile streetscape that had some permanent installations, but a lot of it was going to be able to be stored in the wintertime to lather plowing in the downtown area. It was also going to expand the footprint of the project, and so the past design was concentrated all on one intersection at Fourth and Litchfield, and then the current project, I think, spans kind of throughout the downtown. So I guess, Dave, you just want to go to the next slide? Yeah, and so really kind of, this is a very, very rudimentary, very poorly photoshopped image really just to communicate like what, where the things would be in the street, and then kind of how they would act as mobile, I would say choke downs, but this bump outs would be the technical term. But essentially, like, there'd be, there's going to be plants on them, and so those are really just all the planners, and I guess, Dave, you want to go to the next one? Yeah, so the top one kind of, kind of shows, like, I guess, like, what the bump outs, it's like how the bump downs act as a choke down, but then just kind of, I guess, once again, just very rudimentary photoshopping. So you just kind of want to go to the next picture, Dave, next picture, and you can kind of see them. Yeah, so these are just kind of just different planners, different models, kind of what they'll be looking like, the dimensions of things, and so we still need to go out and get plants for these to be filled with dirt, and so that's part of the process right now. I think that's just part of the process that we're in, but things that have been ordered and should be here either late winter or early spring sometime, so just kind of want to keep going. Yeah, so, once again, not exactly what it'll look like, just photoshopping for, like, just the need for submission. They needed to see it in this regard, and so there's really no other, no other way to communicate it other than just very poorly photoshopped images. Just want to stress, very poorly photoshopped, I don't know. So you just want to keep going. And then, yeah, so then kind of the street clock, so this was the inspiration for it, and so part of it did have like historical preservation angle to it as well, and so there is like an old clock from downtown Wilmer that's, it's diamond jewelers, diamond jewelers on it, and we were able to find several companies that made these street clocks, and we wanted to get a replica of one of them made, and there's actually, Chief Felt was actually able to locate like the replica of the one that was shot downtown, but we're not going to put that one in. So we were able to find, uh, other companies that made the, these street clocks, and we're eventually going to get a quote for those, and those, that'll be downtown as well. So it's going to be... So, yeah, so that's just kind of where we're at. So materials that have been ordered, we're still kind of working on getting the plants and the dirts, and the dirt to make everything look like an actual street, street, streetscape project and really maximize the potential of that project, and then also looking at getting a quote for the street clock to bring back the old diamond jeweler, jeweler street clock downtown Wilmer.
Okay, and just the final activity is the rehab of Lakeview Apartments is located over on, um, 307th Street, and rehab activities are going to include replacing all the windows and all the exterior doors, metal flashing at the concrete panes seams, replacement of air-conditioned grills, and applying a protective coating over the exterior concrete surface, and as well as asbestos abatement. So Lakeview is an eight-story high-rise building, 127 units there, and we have gone out for bid on this project. Project One construction has been selected as a general and will start in work this spring. Next slide is just, uh, just a little plug for fair housing law, that it's illegal to discriminate against any person because of race, color, religion, sex, handicap, familial status, or national origin. It's illegal to do that, discriminate, or sell or rent housing for residential lots, and advertising the sale or rental of housing, and financing housing, and real estate, brokerage services, and appraisal of housing. And last slide, just a shout out to Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development for making these community projects possible for us. So that, Mr. Mayor, is the presentation for the public hearing.
I have a question, but I'm still trying to get up to speed. You had a $3 million renovation that was on the Lake, Lakeview Apartments?
Yeah, the total cost, when we're done with everything, this funding is part of that, so yes, it will be over $3 million when we're done with the windows and everything.
Okay, so the 600,000 for windows?
Yeah, 600,000.
Is in that $3 million? Okay, all right. Any questions? This is a resolution? Oh, I got to close the public hearing.
Yeah, any public...
Yeah, anybody here to speak for or against, or questions? If not, I'll close the, the hearing and bring it back to the council. Justice?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Did you have something more, Justin?
Okay. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. Walker, could, I've heard a lot of concerns about parking downtown. I'm sure that's not new to you. The bump outs are going to take up some parking spots. Any plans about how we're going to replace those, or perhaps even add parking after this project?
Yeah, so that was a, that was a big catalyst, or I guess that was the main reason for a lot of these being movable, and so we would, at summertime, I think, like, when we have a lot of the activities and like we want people kind of out and about downtown, I think there will be a strain on parking. I think that's just kind of a part of the process when we have more events downtown with Main Street, like, and things like that, but I think when we have like a, I don't want to make too many promises on the front end about like how we can move them for like event purposes or things like that, but I mean, if we have like a bigger event or something like that, that would be doable, but like I think in the summertime, there will be a strain on some of the parking just with some of the bump outs, and things, and really just to activate downtown and activate the streets. And then in the wintertime, we'll resume back to just kind of full capacity parking.
Have you heard a lot of feedback from business owners downtown about the bump out plans? Are they concerned? Are they, do they view this as favorable?
Not really, I think, uh, like kind of in the front, on the front end, I think that was the goal, I think, to get a lot of public engagement, and then we didn't really have... And then we didn't really have a lot of turnout. And so that's kind of how things got distilled down to just that one intersection. And I think just kind of generally speaking, from the feedback that I've heard, is more, they want a larger footprint. And I think some people were a little concerned about, as you said, parking in front of their businesses and what the factors with them. And so that's, that's really it. So mostly people just kind of wanted an expanded footprint. Makes people are excited about the plants. And then there's also just like the logistical stuff of who's going to order these things that people are concerned about. So it's really just more, who's ordering things? Is it going to be parking in front of my space, et cetera?
Okay, thank you. No, it looks like a beautiful addition to downtown. Just the concerns over parking, but thank you.
Councilmember Butterfield.
Yeah, just follow up with that. Now, these movable things, if need be, could we move them to the sidewalk? With that sidewalk being very big downtown? If it's becoming too much of a problem?
I guess we could. That, that kind of defeat the purpose of them. But I mean, we could do it. They're super heavy though, so. I don't, it would, it would definitely take machinery to do so. And I think that's kind of the point of them. So I mean, like, when we talk about setting them up, I mean, there'll, there'll be a lot of deliberation and conversation about where we set them up initially. Instead, that way we don't have to move them about just because, and I think also really kind of allowing some grace and like some growing pains of like people just kind of getting used to them. So it's going to be, especially like once the plants kind of come in.
Well, wouldn't it be more feasible then to, before you fill them up, put them all on the street? Test it out for a few days before you fill them up? And if we had to move them to the sidewalk, we can move them to the sidewalk?
We could do that. Could do that.
Leslie.
I think Audrey was first. I'll follow Audrey.
Okay. I just was going to seek clarification. I know we're, there's a deadline for this. And so will we expect that all of this has to be done this year? Is that where we're at?
That's your grant expires 12/31, so yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Leslie.
I want to speak to the bump outs. The reason for the bump outs, and especially in the summertime, is so that our foot traffic and our traffic on the streets, it slows the traffic on the streets for our foot traffic. So that's the reason for the bump outs. It's not, it, it creates a safer distance for foot traffic to cross streets this way because they came, the foot traffic can come out further into the street and then have a shorter distance to cross between those bump outs. So that's the purpose of creating bump outs in your downtown area. And we have greater foot traffic in the summertime than what we do in the wintertime.
What effect does that have on snow removal?
Well, that's why, that, that's why we take them off in the fall of the year so that we can have easy access for snow removal and we're not going around the bump outs. The original plan was to create actually bump outs, concrete bump outs and moving the curbing. But because it also entailed infrastructure for stormwater and that, that was not acceptable to DED in this project, they would not pay for us to have stormwater, anything under the street to be paid for by this, this grant. So we went to these modular bump outs instead. Because the concern is more so in the summertime for walking and that, and to create those safest, safer distances for pedestrians to cross. That's the, that's the biggest idea. That's the big thing for the bump outs in the summertime.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Rick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So will this eliminate jaywalking downtown then?
I would hope so, but I doubt it.
And then for the fall and winter, where do the planters go then? Do you have a garage or shed you're going to store them in?
Storage out at Public Works. They'll, they'll just be outside, I mean, they're massive.
In the fenced in area or something?
No, they're not going to go anywhere.
Anybody else? Justice.
Thank you. Can I get clarification on exactly what the motion is? I'm not seeing anything in the car, and so I'm, I'm curious.
The, the resolution for the motion is to approve the resolution to term, oh no, that's not the right one.
Enter into agreement.
Yep. No, it's, there is no action on this. There was no motion, was there? It's not in that one.
After the public hearing, there's a follow up.
Oh, this one is the, yeah. It's the resolution to approve the administrative agreement for the 2019 Small Cities Development Program. Whereas the Candy Y County HRA submitted an application on behalf of the city of Wilmer for the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development, DED for 2019 Small Cities Development Program. Whereas the Department of Employment and Economic Development has approved the city of Wilmer's application and entered into a contract with the city for 2019 Small Cities Development Program funds now therefore be resolved that the city of Wilmer hereby approves the administrative agreement binding between the city of Wilmer, Minnesota, and the Candy Y County and redevelopment authority for implementation of the 2019 Wilmer Small Cities Development Program heretofore attached. And be it therefore resolved that the mayor and the city administrator of the city of Wilmer, Minnesota are hereby authorized to execute said agreement approved this ninth day of January 2023.
Thank you. It's not even my first day, Mr. Mayor, and I'm still making mistakes and missing.
All right. So we've got a resolution to consider?
Yes.
I can.
That's what you just?
Yep, that's the motion and the second for.
Okay.
I can make that motion.
We already have.
We already have.
We already have it.
We have a motion in the second, so we're just.
We just didn't have clarification of what it was? Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, roll call.
Councilmember Osmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Sheldes?
Aye.
Ask?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Bakerly?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
All right. You're still on. It's consider releasing the Wilmer HRA from past grant revolving funds administration entering into contract with the county to manage the funds.
Okay, this item is about when you have received prior Small Cities Development Program grants in years 2012 or before. Those grants were submitted on your behalf by the Wilmer jury and administered by the Wilmer jury. Sometimes when homeowners or businesses did not fulfill the terms of their loan agreements, those funds were repaid to the HRA and there's a fund of revolving money that still sits there. Candy HRA and Wilmer HRA have for a number of years been consolidating our programs, transferring everything from Wilmer HRA to the HRA. So the purpose of this resolution and agreement is to stop your agreement with the Wilmer HRA to manage that revolving fund and give that responsibility to the Candy Y County jury.
Okay, this is a resolution. We need a motion for the resolution.
I'll enter that motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Discussion. Audrey.
Jill, would you just clarify what's left in the Wilmer HRA if we do this? I mean, what, what do we have left that's still being managed by Wilmer?
The remaining items are an intermediary relending program through rural development that needs to be transferred. It's actually, there is an app at rural development at the federal level to transfer that. And then there is just an issue in the past, the H, the Wilmer HRA issued conduit financing funds for other private or public entities. And it's to determine by the attorneys what the responsibility needs to happen there or how that can be satisfied. That's it.
I was just going to comment, we received the audits for both Wilmer and Candy Y County. And there was a conversation at the board meeting about the cost of the audits to, because Wilmer still has to be audited separate from that and just kind of, you know, how, how this works and, and with some of that. And so I think this is intending to be a cost savings meth, method for the HRA, correct, Jill? Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Roll call.
Councilmember Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Sheldes?
Aye.
Ask?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Bakerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Thank you, Jill. All right, the next item is consider ISCO Inc. mortgage payoff of business subsidy agreement. Leslie.
Yes, ISCO is the primary business for Mueller Enterprises, which was here in the city of Wilmer. And they entered into a business subsidy agreement about four years ago for purchasing 5.9 acres. And in the business subsidy agreement, the city had what was a write-down policy based on what their plans were. So they were going to build a building and they were going to have employed 22 new jobs. And so in that, the city agreed to write down the purchase. The total purchase for the property was 3,200, 3,000, 3, 322,000 plus. And so the company paid a little over $12,000 for the purchase of this property back four years ago. The city wrote down 310,000 in the policy. And so now they want to sell that piece of property. And the city owns the mortgage on that. So they have to pay the city $310,000 and, plus interest for the, for the, to pay off the mortgage so that they would have clear title. So that's what this is about. And they plan on selling this to Case New Holland. And Case New Holland did not want to enter into any business subsidy agreement with the city. They just want the property free and clear. And that's what this would do. The council would just be accepting that mortgage payoff. Robert, do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, Mayor, Council, this is a, this comes to you as a request by ISCO Inc., which is the current property owner of the property, Leslie mentioned, in the Industrial Park Third Edition. The request is for the city to consent to its sale of that property to CNH. Essentially, the city granted the subsidy to ISCO Inc. in 2018 when it conveyed the property from the city to ISCO Inc. So it subsidized ISCO Inc.'s purchase of the property in the amount of $310,000. The subsidy was treated essentially as a forgivable loan. It was secured by a mortgage. In the event that ISCO Inc. had fully developed the parcel as they indicated they would and created the number of jobs that were specified in the business subsidy agreement, the subsidy and the mortgage securing that forgivable loan essentially would have been forgiven. But I believe the project, as indicated in the business subsidy agreement back in 2018, never materialized. So the conditions to forgive that loan essentially to allow that subsidy not to be paid back have not happened. So in order for the city to grant its consent to this sale now, the amount of that subsidy plus interest pursuant to the terms of the subsidy agreement would need to be repaid through the proceeds of the, the sale. And ISCO Inc. has indicated that they will be repaying that, that amount as part of the transaction. And city staff has indicated that, that would satisfy the city so that the city would consent to that transaction and consent to ISCO Inc.'s sale of the property now to CNH. I do know that there's a representative of the seller here in the event there are any questions of the city council. But you should have in your packet a resolution that grants, that authorizes the city to communicate that the city has consented to the sale upon receiving the funds needed to satisfy the mortgage that the city has and the amount of the subsidy, and broadly authorizes the mayor and city administrator to execute any other instruments that the title company working on this transaction would require in order to allow this transaction to close. Essentially, the resolution is the city granting its consent to the sale upon the subsidy being repaid to the city, plus interest.
All right. So we need a resolution introduced to that effect.
I'll make that motion.
We got a motion? We got a second?
Yeah.
Discussion.
I got a question.
Audrey? Go ahead, Rick.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So there's no special assessments or any other mechanic leans or anything on the property? I'll be free and clear.
I'm not aware, Councilmember, of any special assessments. I have not specifically looked for it. That would have been, it's something that would either be repaid through the closing if there were, or it would be assumed by the new buyer. But I, I'm not aware specifically if there are any outstanding assessments or not.
Thank you.
Audrey?
This is just kind of a general question. So when we established that write-down policy and did the subsidy, is there a timeframe in there? Like, we struggle sometimes with purchase price kind of thing versus business subsidy. And so they can pay us back and sell the property for more than what they bought it for, I'm assuming? The subsidy, they're doing what they need to do to get the property free and clear. But the purchase price is not anything we have anything to say about, right?
Yes, Councilmember, this is not something where the city gets to dictate what the sale price is. I don't actually know what the sale price is. This is, this is simply, the city has the right in the business subsidy agreement to consent or not to any subsequent transfer. The reason being that obviously the city's interest in entering into this agreement and establishing covenants on the Industrial Park property is to see that this property is put to beneficial use by private industry. So once the city received assurance that there is another buyer that has plans for this property and that the city's subsidy plus interest would be repaid according to the clawback provisions in the subsidy agreement, it seemed the city's condition to grant that consent would be satisfied.
Just a second question. I am assuming that, I mean, we have a fund out there for the industrial park. Will the, these proceeds go back into that fund or?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember O'Brien? Sheldes?
Aye.
Ask?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Bakerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
All right, the next is licensing agreement with Jason Butler Cityline Towing. Robert?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This matter pertains to a request the city received from the owner of property on either side of the First Avenue Bridge between Pacific and Benson Avenues, owned by and operated by Cityline Towing Company. And the request was for permission to use the city-owned property beneath the bridge in conjunction with the towing operation that this business operates on either side of that city-owned property under the bridge. This agreement that we've prepared for your consideration tonight is a license agreement. This is not an agreement through which the city will be granting any permanent property rights to the business owner. This is a permission the city is granting, in this case for a term of one year, in exchange for a license fee of $20,000. The license agreement, again, is not conveying, it's not leasing the property. It's not conveying an easement interest in the property to another party. It's simply granting permission to another party to use property owned by the city. The agreement contains provisions protecting the city's interest to access the site for any public purpose. It also allows MINDOT to access the site to inspect the First Avenue Bridge above the licensed area. It includes provisions requiring the property owner, It includes provisions requiring the property owner, in order to use this property, to maintain insurance and indemnify the city in the event that its use of this property were to lead to any claims against the city. These are all standard provisions that we would include in any license agreement the city would enter into to grant a third-party right to use city-owned property. The agreement's before you, again, at the request of the business owner. The agreement was developed in conjunction with city staff to make sure that the city's interests were protected in this agreement. So with that, I believe the recommendation would be that the council approve the license agreement as drafted. And I would just add, since this was put together relatively quickly for this meeting, that the council authorization include or extend to authorize the mayor and city administrator to sign a version of this draft that's substantially consistent with the draft in your packet that will allow some flexibility if a couple details need to be changed in the agreement with changing the overall substance of the agreement before it's executed.
Okay. Audrey?
I don't wish to make a motion, and I'm confused. I think we had asked for clarification on insurance, both how it would affect our insurance and what amount we would need for them to have insurance. So I don't see any documentation or comments regarding that. And I'm also just curious, because the fence is done. And we very clearly, at the last council meeting, did not approve it. And so I'm confused. I'm not comfortable with this at all. I don't know that our questions have been answered. And is this something that they've agreed to with what we, I mean, are we bringing it with their agreement? Or is this our request to them?
Mayor and council, I don't know if this specific draft has been thoroughly reviewed and agreed to by the property owner. This is the draft that I drafted after coordinating the city staff on what was proposed. I would note the effective date as drafted of this license would be retroactive to January 1st. And in specific regard to the insurance question in the license agreement, we included language requiring the property owner, the licensee, to maintain a general liability policy in the amount of, I believe it was $2 million.
It was three.
Which would also cover any contractual, it would also cover any contractual obligations that the licensee would have under this agreement.
So have we reviewed this with our insurance? Because they reject, I mean, they will review our contracts to, you know, at the insurance trust. Have we reviewed this with them, whether this is something? And because they could reject, if we have an issue, they could reject our insurance for not following through with, with some of this. And I guess I have real concerns about what's already being stored under there from batteries and fuel and, you know, just a concern with, for electric cars. It's a mess under there already and it's full. And it's not even something that we've approved. And so I'm prepared to say no at this point in time.
We have not had the insurance trust go through this because we just got this also. So until this was completely put together like this too, I couldn't really take it to the insurance trust and talk to them about it either. But now that we've got this document put together, now we can have them review that and tell us what, what they feel is the insurance issues that we may be encountering.
I saw Carl, Julie, and Tom. Who was first or? Carl?
This may have been covered, and I just, not understanding or missed it. Can this come back? Can the city be liable? Let's say that there is some damage to the bridge and something happens, worst case? Can the city be held liable for anything with that?
Thank you, Mayor, council member. The agreement does contain an indemnification clause. Well, it contains two things, that one would be a waiver by this business, this licensee of any claims against the city resulting out of this permission that the city would be granting. It also contains an indemnification clause that requires the licensee to indemnify the city for any claims that might arise that have anything to do with this business's use of this property. And tied to that would be the insurance requirements, that the liability policy cover the, kind of a contractual indemnification obligation that the license would establish.
Julie?
I think sometimes the city gets a bad rap that we're not cooperating with business and that we put up roadblocks to business. And I just want people to understand the position we're in on this property. This is city property. We own this property. And I can appreciate that Cityline Towing went in and cleaned up some of it with the anticipation that the city might lease it to them someday. And two months ago, they put up posts on city property. And the city administrator told the city staff to go tell them, they had to stop. They did not have any permission, they did not have any legal authority to put up posts or do anything on city property. And then we discussed this at the last city council meeting at the end of December. And we said we had some concerns, which we've discussed. What if there was a fire? And what if it damaged the bridge deck? It shut down, anything, maybe, maybe the tow truck did something, damaged one of the pillars. This is a main thoroughfare for the city of Wilmer. And so we wanted to discuss that. And Cityline Towing knew that. I went by there, I drove by there like two weeks ago, week and a half ago, and there was a fence going up. And I thought, hmm, something must have changed. That something got approved, but I knew it hadn't come through the council, and I knew that there wasn't a lease agreement. And they took it upon themselves to put up a fence on city property. And then I think, what are we supposed to do? So if some other business sees that there's some city land that's not being used at this time, and they decide, you know what, I think I'd like to put a building on that piece of land. And, and they put a building there. Of, I mean, obviously, we would tell them, you can't do that. And just like, somebody can't just put up posts, put posts in city property and put up a fence. And I'm flabbergasted by the audacity that somebody would do that. I'm like, who does that? That is city property. Now, we want businesses to succeed. We, we want businesses to prosper, but there's a right way to do it. There's a legal way to do it. And that wasn't followed here. And we have an obligation to protect the city, to protect city property, to protect our investments from liability, from lawsuits, or what might happen. And I just, I want to make sure that this is ironclad and that the city is protected because so far, I feel that, in my personal opinion, they've already gone over the line. And what's, what's going to make them honor a lease agreement that, that we would say today, when they're already thinking that they can just build on city property without permission? So I just, I think we've got to just think long and hard on this one.
Tom?
No, lease agreement, I think you say was $20,000 just for one year?
Correct, as drafted, yes.
What would happen in the second year? It'd be, have to go through the new lease again?
As this agreement, as drafted, would, is a one-year permission that does not automatically renew. So presumably, if the business wants to continue, the similar agrees to this and wants to continue this arrangement beyond the one-year term, they would need to make application for renewal and have a new agreement come before you.
Justin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I started off being very supportive of this project, and council member Osmus has stated my frustrations very well, so I can, I can skip that part of my frustrations and just ask my questions. So again, thank you, and I concur. $2 million for the general liability insurance seems low to me. I'm no insurance expert, so how did we arrive at that number? Isn't enough.
The number was calculated to cover the city's maximum exposure under the Tort Claims Liability Act, which is $1.5 million. I don't believe carriers sell $1.5 million policies, but they do sell $2 million policies. So that's how that came up with.
Thank you.
Vicki?
Okay. I'm curious, so on the lease agreement, it says no work shall be done during its term until it's obtained all the required approvals and permits. So when they put up this fence, did they have a permit for that?
So currently in the city of Wilmer, fences don't require permits unless they're above six feet tall, like six, seven. So I think you need like a seven-foot fence for it to be, for it to require permit because a seven-foot fence needs to be engineered and needs to have footings.
I see. I guess I, I feel apprehensive, like Julie. I just feel like I don't know why they put up a fence before they had permission, and it doesn't really leave me feeling hopeful. It's just my thoughts.
Audrey?
Thank you. I'm struggling between just making a motion to say no or making a request to table it to seek clarification on our responsibility. And I think there's a couple other things. So they just did this, so can we just go take it down? And can we just go move all the cars that are under there? Because it's full. And we have not given permission to do this. And so I don't know how you work, how we would come to terms with a lease with someone who hasn't respected any of the regulations, any of the property and any of that. And so it was my understanding that staff was apprehensive about this too. And so I think we're just setting ourselves up for someone who is just going to do whatever he wants, no matter what, with that. And so I'm, I'm struggling with it, and I'm not comfortable with it. And I think Julie stated it, council member Osmus stated it very clear. You know, they haven't respected us, and they haven't come forward with any suggestions. And who's, what are we going to do next? I'm also concerned about the bridge just itself with, we should be taking steps to look at, what are we going to do with that bridge? We should probably be looking at the fact that we need more land to have a walkway and some of those types of things. That's not something that we've talked about. I think this sets us back for any kind of future needs for that bridge. So with that, I think I'm, I'm prepared to just make a motion to say no, to deny this.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, further discussion. Rick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So did any time a staff person tell them they could do this? Whenever they started discussing it in October, November, or September?
Yeah, so in the early parts of this, we looked at the feasibility of this, and it was determined that if, he was like, well, if we're going to put up a fence, I'd like it up through, I'd like it up by the winter, and so before the freeze, he wanted to put posts up. And so then he put posts up, and then cars moved, and then all these other things. So I did not give him permission to put up posts. I told him that, okay, well, I kind of need to see about this, I need to talk to the administrator, kind of see the process of everything that's going to happen. And so we were initially talking about leasing or possibly purchasing it. But then posts went up, so, and then we've kind of, it's progressed since there.
So there was nothing in writing?
Nope.
They might have taken it as a yes verbally.
Yeah, yeah, so I did go out there and I met with them, and we kind of walked around and so viewed, I just laid eyes on like what their firsthand concerns were, just as far as like people overnight camping there, fires at the base of the bridge and things like that. And so then from that, like I had a conversation with city administrator Valian about some of our concerns already, already being realized and that we're kind of in the position of, we should either probably put up a fence or allow someone who would like to put up a fence privately. And so that's kind of where we were at. And then conversations kind of stalled because we were once again in the situation of figuring out what the liability was, if other places did this, what it would look like, other insurance needs, et cetera, et cetera, what's the threat, electric cars being stored.
And I thought, at our last meeting when we talked about this, it was just going to be a pass-through. They were just going to drive under the bridge to get to the old Ides Refrigeration. But now they're storing stuff under the bridge?
Yeah, and so talking with Cityline Towing, that was one of the things of like initially, I think for the better part of this year, maybe impounding was going to be the main use of that. And that was the catalyst for the actual fence going up was contractual obligations for storing fatal cars or something like that. But it was contractual obligations about storing the, about storing cars there.
Under the bridge?
Yeah, so in an impound lot, there needs to be like blocking view, but it was essentially like a contractual obligation of that triggered the rest of the fence going up.
So were they planning on tearing down the Ides building?
Yeah, so that's, that's the plans in the future.
Because I could see them driving underneath the bridge to get to that property. I don't like it that they store stuff under it.
Yeah, and so those are the eventual plans. And like, like I said, so they've, they purchased the building or have purchased the building and are working towards putting plans together to improve that building and then making it a pass-through. But currently, as of right now, it's an impound lot, and they're contractually obligated to, I think, hold, there's, there's some phrase to use, but that was the catalyst for the rest of the fence going up instead of the fence post.
Thank you.
Justin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question for city staff. For tonight's meeting, was Mr. Butler or anyone from Cityline Towing made aware that this was on the agenda?
No.
Okay. And then a follow-up, has there been conversation with Mr. Butler or someone from Cityline Towing in the last two weeks since our previous meeting?
So, I guess, yeah, I got, yeah, I talked to him earlier today, so.
And Kyle talked to him last Friday.
I feel like there's been a big gap. There's been a lot of questions. Is there any information you can share with us to summarize, like, what has brought us here?
Kyle, you want to join here?
Sure, I'll start. Justice has worked in this conversation today, you can add in as well. I placed a phone call after some meetings last Thursday, I believe, spoke with Mr. Butler on the property just to gather more information to see where we're, how we got to where we're at today. Just questions along the lines of what do you plan to do with the property? Did anyone give you permission to use the property, to build on the property? First, I'll start with, did anyone give you permission to use the property? He stated, yes, we know that there's controversy with that answer.
Can I just interject? Is, like, I can understand that originally, there seems like, months ago, whenever, there seems to be confusion over whether or not permission was given. There seems to be no question about that based on our meeting from two weeks ago. Would he assume that that permission has come since then?
No. As I stated to Mr. Butler, he was at the last council meeting in December. We had talked about that meeting, the motion that council had given. It was to see more information and come back with an agreement to counsel at a later date. His statement to me was, no one had gotten back to him, he's not going to sit around and wait, so he just put up a fence. That's where we're at right now. I was also going to add, what else was I going to add? I apologize. We just talked about the, or just talked about the use of the property. If it was going to be storage or pass-through, he tends to use it as both in his conversation to me. Again, my call was just to gather more information to draft or work with the city attorney to draft all of licensing. If Mr. Walker, Director Walker had any additional conversation, that was my conversation in summary from him last Friday, last Thursday.
Councilmember O'Brien?
A lot of this has already been covered, but...
A lot of this has already been covered, but one of the concerns that I've had, and I've seen other bridges, where there's traffic underneath, they have what's called a donut, which is a six-foot rise of concrete around the support beam. Because if those things get hit and damaged, you're looking at some very, very serious time, lag time, or lost time on that bridge, because they're going to do investigations on that structure. That's what I've seen in the past, places that I've been. So I'm just thinking, has there been any talk about protection of the support beams at all?
Yeah, there has been. Yeah, so one of the things that we looked at was, as a part of the lease agreement, like getting engineered bollards surrounding the pillars, because currently, they're already platted, the pillars are, and those are the things that are separate from this property. And so we were looking at getting engineered bollards to surround each of the pillars to make sure and protect them from any damage from any vehicle passing through or the vehicles being stored underneath.
Tom, did you say something? No? Okay. Audrey?
Yeah, and it's confusing to me when he says he needs to drive underneath it to go from one side of the property to the other. The street's right there, it's not a busy street. I don't understand why, why you would need to go under there. And to my recollection, that bridge has always been clear underneath. If you think about being concerned about homeless or people someplace there, to me, having that clear that you can see underneath there, not only is it a safety issue for the bridge, but also what we have now is, you could hide anywhere in there, in those, in the cars. The fence isn't contained, it's open on both sides, you can look through there. I just think this is a really bad idea, both for the city, and I think what he's gone ahead and done really lends itself to, it's not someone who's interested in working with us. So that's, I don't, I'll quit with that.
Thanks, Mayor and council. I just wanted a couple points to make sure I was clear about before you vote on the motion. First, Planning Director Walker mentioned the engineered bollards, that is a requirement in this license agreement, that they install those around each pillar supporting the bridge. The second thing is, I just want to be clear, this is a permission that the city council could consider granting. This agreement would be the way to do it, in my view, that would best protect the city from any liability in allowing this use. But by no means is this something the city is required to grant. There's no entitlement for this business to use the property this way. So if the council does not approve this agreement, the answer to the question raised earlier is yes, this business would need to remove all the property, the fencing that has been installed on the city property. And it's not even a matter of what does the city ordinance require, it's a, you don't own this property issue. The city's the owner of the property, and if the city doesn't want these things on its property, it can require them be removed immediately, which is what we would do if the agreement isn't passed.
Tom? In the agreement, is there anything for storage underneath the bridge?
Yes, thank you. As drafted, based on my discussions with staff, the permission specifically that the city would be granting would be permission to use the area under the bridge for the purpose of parking vehicles and accessing the properties on either side of that area, and other uses incidental to the towing business that this company operates. Certainly, as with any of the provisions I've summarized for the council tonight, if the council wishes to change those, we can obviously do that, too, based on direction from the council tonight. So it doesn't have to be something where you approve it as I've drafted it or not at all.
I don't have any say in this, but I have had a discussion with Mr. Butler, and I really appreciate what they've done down there in spiffing up that part of the city. And I know that there, that he anticipates taking the Ides Building down and just having the Quonset that's over there left. Yeah, I'm concerned about hitting the abutments on the bridge. I'm even more concerned about cars down there and a fire. I'm not comfortable with it. I just am not. And like I say, as much as I appreciate what they're trying to do, I'm just not comfortable with it. I have to speak my piece in what I'm comfortable with and what you're comfortable with in protecting the city, so. You made a motion.
I made a motion to deny their request.
Was there a second?
Yes.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Tom?
Could we change it where there's no parking of any, you know, vehicles, just use it as a drive-through for them?
Yes, Mayor and council, if the council direction was to change the permissions granted to not allow parking, and that it'd only be an access permission, in other words, to use this area to access one property on either side of it from the other, we would certainly do that if that were the council's desire.
I'm confused about that one. So if you're going to take a wrecker and now move a car from one side to the other, isn't there just as much exposure to hitting the bridge or doing some of those types of things, going from one side to the other, versus driving on the street from, to the other side? So I don't see that as even a reason to consider, to consider this either, so.
Julie?
Okay, so does he have any other fenced-in area where he's bringing the towed vehicles?
You just mean generally in town?
Yes.
Yeah, I think so. So there's a lot off of Highway 12, closer by the pedestrian bridge over there, that, yeah, 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 on Benson over there, that got, that was recently subdivided several months ago, like where they also store cars, but yeah.
If not, calls in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose.
Aye. Yeah, I'm sorry, Mayor, this one is a resolution.
It is a resolution.
It is a resolution.
I'm sorry. But Audrey made a motion.
It's being denied.
To deny it, yes. Motion to deny. Still do a roll call, so we have the actual vote, if you want to.
Yeah.
It's up to you.
So to clarify, now we're voting yes to approve, no to deny?
No.
Audrey's motion to deny.
We're voting yes to approve Audrey's motion?
To deny.
Okay.
Or no to deny.
Yes, please, no.
Okay. All right. Do a roll call.
Councilmember Sholdas?
Aye.
Ask?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Oh.
Osmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
No.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Six ayes, two nays.
Motion passes. Is that it, Robert, on that then?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Community pride announcements. Any? If not?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
We adjourned.